That's all we get for being in the early parts.
Okay. All right, meeting is called to order. All right, we need a roll call to determine if we've got a quorum.
Taffernall.
Here.
Teffley.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Fagerlin.
Here.
Miller.
You.
Jelenic.
Here.
Aaron's. You have a quorum?
Mr. Perry, are you picking us up or do you need the mics?
It wouldn't hurt.
Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. From a July 5th, 2023 meeting, once the commission has had a moment to review those minutes, we entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion from Karen Teffley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Was that Ray?
Yep.
Second by Mr. Ray Wilson, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing not all in favor of approving the minutes from July 5th, 2023, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion is carried, minutes approved. Next item, item two, future land use planning related to the campus property. Mr. Glassbrenner, did you want to begin or would you like someone else to?
Ashley? Me? Oh. Well, we've had some discussions recently internally with the mayor, Ashley, myself, regarding a lot of the information that's coming out around the campus reconfiguration process that they're working through, that the county is working through. And so I know that's been communicated by the mayor and myself when we have the opportunity that the reconfiguration process is a great opportunity, but also potentially has a lot of, there are a lot of details, processes and procedures that would have to be followed and adhered to on part of the city and the county. So the property is 100% inside the city limits. And so there are a lot of ordinances, you know, municipal ordinances, state statutes, and then of course, the preference of the planning commission and city council as to what reconfiguration may look like. So we had been throwing around the idea of possibly sending a letter from the planning commission, which you have kind of a very rough draft of, that touches on some different topics and offers a protocol for communication so that hopefully we can avoid any communication breakdown that has the county and all of their efforts getting way down the road on some conceptual plan and the city coming back and saying, yeah, but that doesn't fit our long-range planning for the city. So that letter that you have there kind of addresses some of that. I think the idea would be that, again, it would be issued by the planning commission, probably go to Candace Pash, the county administrator, and we would actually work with Candace to make sure that probably this draft, in her mind, was appropriate for her committees and the county board, so that we're not, we're not actually making a mistake in the way that we communicate to them. We're doing our best to be a collaborative partner. We just want everyone to be aware that there is a lot that goes into planning something of a reconfiguration of 130 acres. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Yeah, and at this point, for anyone who doesn't know yet, Dave Turk was elected the chair of the county's committee dealing with this issue. And of course, you all know who the new administrator is. I talked to Dave in the last week again and just kind of asked him again to keep us in the loop so that we don't avoid a misstep, and we means us, them, and everyone in the city, because they're very early in the process. They're having someone go through each building out there and give them recommendations on the condition of the building. This would need this, this would take that. And there's, they're nowhere near any sort of decision-making process, but what we're trying to do is just avoid getting, you know, getting into this a little too late in the conversation and there's something coming that's not going to work. And Dave's been fully understanding and just suggested that we keep talking about it all the way through. Obviously, those meetings are open meetings. If anybody here would like to attend them, we could do that too. And nobody's pushing back because first of all, they understand the magnitude of the task at hand that they've got. And then I think they respect the fact that, yeah, the properties in the city, and they can kind of see it from our point of view if the shoe was on the other foot. So the good news is I think both entities are kind of on the same page here.
Just a couple of comments, Mayor. I did have the opportunity to listen to the meeting via Zoom, their, on their last meeting, and they did make mention that they wanted to move the move it from the education committee to public works committee so that it was properly in the proper committee, because it's no longer an education facility. So public works will probably have, you know, better, better information and just, you know, have things move along. The only thing that they did agree to was to move the county extension back into Melville Hall.
Yeah.
And some conversation of moving Health and Human Services to, to the building. But that was, they had quite a few things that they're going to have on the next agenda, so it might be a good one to tune into.
For sure. Like I said, it's the beginning of the process and who knows what direction it will take next, but there's a lot to sort out. The one thing that I heard that Dave told me, preliminary discussion of maybe using the Science Building and putting Health and Human Services in there, but just even as soon as he said it, he said that we have to get access to it, a parking close enough. I mean, he just says one example came up and immediately he's filling in all the steps that would be required just to do it. And I mean, I think there's going to be a good deal of that. You know, every idea is going to have a what-if.
Yeah, I mean, the subject of the two bridges came up again and the fact that, the cities play in either or both, but they did talk about keeping the bridge that would be closest to the Science Building, part of their property, and possibly asking the city to buy the one that would be, you know, Science Bridge, I'll just call it that. Don't know what else to call it, but.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry. I just have a clarification question, just because, well, maybe I missed it. Is the lease completely off of this from the state? Does, is it back in county control or does the state still technically have a lease on the property? Or do we even know?
Well, from that meeting, I can tell you that Platteville agreed to put the technology in, back into Melville Hall for the county. So I was kind surprised to hear that. So there's, there's something. Yeah, good question.
Yeah, but what I can tell you about the lease is it's, it's very short. I believe it's two to three pages in total, you know, written in.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five for 99 years. So.
I just didn't know if this was one of those things where we're stepping in here, the county wants to do their thing, but they still have to get state approval because the lease is still in act, or the lease has ended, this is now completely a county issue?
The lease would be ended because it was a 95, 99.
Wasn't there the condition of it had to be used for educational?
There is. So the last update I had from the county, they were still hashing out that point.
Okay.
With the UW system, and I haven't had an update beyond that statement. So I don't know.
Because it was written, it was, it's very vague, but you could probably play both sides of that vague argument. Just didn't know where we, if, if I missed something or if it had, something had changed.
Not that I've heard, doesn't mean they haven't. I just haven't had an update on it.
And I didn't hear anything to that effect at that meeting either?
So some of the elements that, of course, as the mayor's mentioned, and has been discussed or displayed under the topics on the, on the screen here. So, you know, we are concerned with the county's vision as well as the overall city vision. Streets and bridges were mentioned, utilities, their ability to be, to service greater development. Stormwater management is an issue. There's floodplain issues. I see that came up. There are TIF, possible TIF implications, tax incremental financing implications, future land use, zoning, rezoning, and, and land division. All of these things can be things that should be considered and that the planning commission has, you know, interest in. So.
And I think even just more basic, we're talking about a change of use, right? So it's no longer an educational facility. So we're changing the use unless a new school comes there. And I just looked up the zoning district, it's in an R1, a residential district. So that doesn't necessarily look like the structures that are there would be conducive to things that are allowable use within an R1. So perhaps there could be some sort of retrofitting or redevelopment that is, but it is likely that there's probably, I think as Jason mentioned, that there's going to be rezoning. So that's going to have to be something that comes here and is agreed that it's in alignment with the comprehensive plan, it's compatible with the vision, as Jason pointed out. All, all of that sort of stuff, that just basic foundational things that because it was a campus, anything that comes next is likely to be a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, just a couple of other comments that were made at that meeting by the county administrator is kind of a reach out to the community.
Right.
And to any, you know, anybody that's interested in contacting companies that would be interested in moving in there, you know. So, and they have reached out to companies. You didn't make mention of who they were, but there are some conversations going forward that, you know, kind of led me to believe that, or gave the inference that they are, you know, trying to plan that or something. So, might be a good time to.
Jason and Ashley and I met with the utility department heads and with the chair of the utility commission also on Monday, and we'll do it again periodically for things such as this, because yes, those buildings are on city utilities, but depending on what else you want to do, for example, getting water to other parts of the property that don't currently have service will not be inexpensive because of the distance from which they'll come. Things like that. So I guess what we're trying to do, while we stay informed and the county stays informed, we don't want to leave anybody out, because obviously, things like that could impact the utilities budgets and their planning and all of that as well. So we're, we're kind of, we're taking that on and staying in touch with them. And Steve Krueger was outlining for us, you know, where water would come from if you had to bring it. Things like that, the sewer sounds pretty easy, gravity-fed. Todd seemed not concerned at all. I would say that. And electric doesn't sound like a big deal either. And honestly, none of them are a huge problem, but the most expensive of the three to supply to currently uncertain parts of that property will be water.
So what your ask is essentially is that as we've established, there's a lot of elements to this process. We know they're in their infancy stage of this, but because no matter what, the city's going to have to be pretty darn involved because of the location. And we all agree and know that it's critical that we have good lines of communication. I think our goal is to be able to, to be supportive of whatever comes there and how, you know, how can we make sure that we're helping them make whatever it is work, but we've got to be sure to stay within the confines of our regulations. So we don't want to, as was said, get too far and have to say no. So the ask would be, if you're comfortable, given the, the authority and the responsibility of this commission, if you're comfortable, you have that draft letter in front of you, there's some, some tweaking that still needs to go on before it is sent over, but if you're comfortable, the request would be to authorize sending this letter in, in final form, requesting that we have some established communication protocols and expectations. And part of the letters establish in what is the necessary or desired level of communication. And so in discussions, you know, we were considering, you guys meet once a month. So would it be possible that on a monthly basis, there was some sort of report about the campus from the county to us? And that doesn't mean that a county representative would necessarily have to be here. It could be, they communicated with the mayor or myself or Jason and we're providing it or written something, an email, whatever the case may be. And as they continue to move through the process and get, get their ideas refined and ready to go, then the need for them to be in person and really working with this commission would increase. But it's, it's up to you all.
So just a question then, has there been any reach out to the city planning or economic development to have a seat at the table during their meetings? They're open meetings.
Yeah, I, I've not been formally invited, but you're right, they are open meetings. And I don't know, have you been formally?
They just asked me to attend the first one for like the first 10 minutes, to give them an overview of other things the city was working on, which I did. But other than that, no. I mean, again, it's an open meeting. I don't think it's anything getting in anyone's way if you want to be there. In fact, there is nothing in the way if you want to be there. And this is going to go a while. This isn't a little thing. And as we mentioned, they're going to be asking people in the community if they have ideas. I mean, this is really preliminary where they are right now. So it's, if you want to have a say, it's a great time to show up at one of those meetings. Because it's, it's, I mean, how many times does something like this happen here? Not often.
Can I, if I may just add, it's a, it's a great point, and we don't want to be at this point so early in, in the process to be overly burdensome to the county or making them not want to work with us. So as far as how often should we get an update or a report or something, you know, maybe monthly might feel too much for them. And that's, that's where I think we could talk with Candace, the county administrator, and say, what's reasonable? What's reasonable?
Yeah, and I expect to get it. I've already got open communication with the, with the chair over there, and I'm sure you will hear from Candace. I don't think this is going to be a problem hearing from them. Well, I mean, I think they do understand what we're saying.
Well, then, you know, maybe part of this letter could be an offer, more or less, that we would, you know, like to have a seat at the table or be one seat in the committee, one seat from either planning or economic development or wherever. I mean, just to show that you don't have to just report to us, we are interested. So, you know, more of a standing the old olive branch kind of thing and saying, we're interested, we would like to be, we understand it's an open meeting, but you know, that to have some representation, I don't know. It might, the idea is for it to come off as, we would like information from you, but we would like to provide, you know, somebody from the city, you know, to hear what you're doing too. I mean, you know, something like that. Or maybe not, doesn't matter, I mean.
I mean, we could say that. I, I don't think any of them are telling us not to come now. That's all I'm saying.
I, I understand they're not saying that you can't come or we don't want you there, but more of a, we would want to, you know, to be there just as, you know, another set of ears, hearing what, you know, what you're what, what you're saying and that, that we think it's important. What you're saying, yeah?
I think we could absolutely include in the letter, like in the area where it talks about the frequency of communication. We could even add that in there if desired or if the county would be amenable, a member of the plan commission would willingly participate or attend those meetings to, to be proactively involved. The only caution I would have to that is there's, from just this sort of ideas that we've heard floating around coming from them, whomever that is, if that person was able to go, I would imagine there'd be a lot of questions, regulatory questions that they would be posed. And so that would be a challenge, because, you know, we're inclined to try to answer those questions, but I'm sure nobody in this room knows all of the zoning code.
Right.
No.
Right, exactly. And so, you know, they were, they were communicating about creating a road that goes back behind the Legion and into the trailer court area, making that an actual, actual city street. And there's a bridge and there's floodplain and there's all of these layers of complexity. And while that might be a great idea, we need to have, you know, city zoning involved in that, planning, the planning commission involved in that, public works involved in that. So I just, I would say that I think it would be of great value to have somebody from this commission there, but knowing that, what, what information that might be tried, they might try to draw out of them, we just might not be able to provide, but then knowing, hey, I'll go and refer it to the appropriate city person.
Yeah.
Which committees this under again? Public Works for the county or?
Have they decided that yet? It's, it's just a formed, I don't know if they're referring to it as an ad hoc committee, but they were, they formed a committee to.
Sure. I was just going to the county website and trying to figure out which was falling under.
They just called the reconfiguration committee.
That's a good point.
It's, it's a, I think there are seven county board members on it. As I mentioned, they elected Dave Turk as the chair. And I don't know what they call it, but that committee is its own. I don't know if they decided to care at this point. It isn't education now because it's not what it was. So if they send it to public works yet, or they still have to decide that?
It sounded like they were still deciding.
Yeah.
It was just something that was going to be on the next agenda. That's, that's what he was asking for at that time. So.
So.
Go ahead.
Send the letter or not?
Are you looking for a motion?
I, yeah. Let me just double check the agenda probably ever. Yes.
It's on there as an action item. Doesn't specifically say the letter, but future land use related to campus property, which is what the letter pertains to.
I'll make a motion to forward the, the draft, the final draft on the letter. That is to Richmond County Board of Supervisors for the campus reconfiguration efforts.
Came up a motion from Ms. Teffley, is there a second?
I will second.
Second from Ms. Fagerlin, any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Okay. Teffley?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fagerlin?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jelenic?
Aye.
Taffernall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is implementation of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so I think this one is a standing agenda item. And at the last meeting, I think we discussed kind of taking the opportunity to open up the, the comprehensive plan progress tracker and kind of look through a couple of these items and just make comment so that we're kind of working through all of the items that were listed in the comprehensive plan. This will really be the first time that we've kind of looped back around, so we may have to make some format changes to make sure that in the future that you've got what you need. I think we spent quite a bit of time the last time through on economic development, I believe, and also maybe prioritizing different elements within, within the matrix. Is there?
First, I think we talked about getting it as like a Google sheet or a shareable document. Did that come through? Does everybody have that?
Yes.
In a workable way?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So admittedly, since our last meeting, Jason and I have not been able to work on this, so we don't have any updates or changes from our last meeting. However, if any of you have worked on it at all or have comments about what we have kind of edited thus far, we'd be willing to receive that.
I haven't had a chance to enter my information in here, because I just got into this earlier today. Somehow or another, Google didn't like my sign-in information. Anyway, I figured it out, changed password. I guess that always works. Anyway, I think one of the first things we were talking about, the, the idea of how to regulate or how to make the Airbnb's or the short-term rental properties, you know, have some controls over them. In some of the initial research I've done, that communities are trying to regulate number of days that people can stay, but you really can't from, from, you know, where it is right now and like I say, the view that I've looked at, you can't really regulate the number of short-term rentals in your community. So, you know, we, we were looking at it as a way to keep housing stock as housing and not as I mean, entertainment, but, yeah, tourism-related entities. So I will do some more looking on that, but that's, that's what I found. Several communities have taken it to court. There's been attorney comments and whatnot made. That's where that is. So I don't know if there's much we can do in that.
Ashley, whenever you have a minute, which I know you have so many extras, see if you can get, or any of us could. The city of Manona passed an ordinance related to this, but I haven't read it. I don't know how, the language. But they, they've adopted one. We should look at it and see exactly what they did. I know they had asked one, but I haven't had a chance to read it. And I, La Crosse was looking into it, but I haven't heard it. If it went anywhere yet. But Manona actually passed one. We should look at that. Yeah, because I mean, obviously, I think this is an ongoing issue in a lot of communities right now.
I wonder if they could do like a district, you know, like a historic preservation district, if that's an approach.
Yeah, I was just having the same thought. I think this is a good item that we can interject into the city rezoning process that we're going through right now. So with that note, we can just work to consult with Veer Brick Engineering and perhaps reach out like Mayor Todd suggested, to another municipality or two that has something in place. And then we can bring that back to you when we move to have the complete repeal and replace of the zoning ordinance for the city.
Okay, anything else tonight on the comprehensive plan? Let it move aside to status updates and future agenda items. Some listed here, story field zoning modernization, highway 14 traffic, financial planning, TIF planning, sale of city homeland. If you have one ready to go, just jump on the list.
I'll, can I start quick? We'll need to discuss this when we set the next meeting date, but we do have a rezon and a conditional use permit application. The conditional use permit is in the ETZ, so it's going to, going to require a joint meeting with the ETZ board. Right now, we're looking at a, a special meeting, so it'd be outside of this, the normally once-a-month meeting, and September 14. Looks like it would be a date that would work as far as newspaper postings and the required publications and all of that. So I will be emailing you all a copy of those applications so that you can review them in advance of the meeting and then we can have that joint meeting.
When is it, September 14?
September 14th at 6:30.
I also will not be able to make that meeting in person, anyway.
Okay, well, if we end up having to change the date, we're going to have to do a meeting in between now and the typical one.
We, we could, September 14th is the earliest date we could have that meeting. And both will go to council after this, and so they meet on October 30. And both will go to council after this, and so they meet on October 3rd, so anytime between the 14th and the council meeting. So ideally, we wanted to have those before the next planning commission meeting, which is on the 27th. But if that's what it needs to be, then we can do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, is there, just in that, in that window, like in that part of September, are people out of town or is just that day bad?
I'll be out of town.
Until?
All that week, the 10th through the 16th.
Okay. Candace?
I'll be out of town until the 18th.
Right.
Um, I could call in.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. I, I don't think this is going to be a particularly lengthy meeting. We just need to make sure we have a quorum. Just some things that would have been on tonight's agenda, but for some of these regulatory stuff with running things in the newspaper and whatnot, that have to be, those boxes have to be checked. So we could obviously have a meeting that was also available online. Ray, are you open to that? Are you going to be?
I won't be able to use my phone.
Okay. Mr. Jelenic, will you be available?
I have nothing going on.
Okay, I'll be around.
Karen?
I'll be around.
Okay. Ms. Miller? So if nothing else, we have a quorum sitting right here saying that we can. Okay. If, Candace, if you were to participate by phone, is there a time that does not work?
Um, just after like 5:00 PM would be best.
Yeah.
So you said 6:30 PM? That'd be.
Pretty good then on Thursday, as soon as I get done with the day job. So that's when Thursday, we're an hour later there. I bet you knew that. And then we could do that then, if, if the 14th is 6:30 mark. Did you say you can't do that?
No, I can do it. I'm old.
14th, you can't do that?
No, not the 14th. Any other day but the 14th.
Okay, well, we can't go before then, and that's Thursday. Do you want to push it till the next Monday or something?
So the, the only challenge with the Monday, because there's always a challenge, would be that's the third Monday of the month, personnel meets that evening, and is that when the library board meets as well?
Okay. Tuesday?
The third Tuesday though, I think that one.
I think the third Tuesday sounds wonderful. What's that date?
19.
The 19th.
About that?
Perfect.
I'm good.
And that one would be 5:30. Thursday, Tuesday, the 19th and 5:30 will be the next meeting.
I will be able to do that one.
Well, we'll have a quorum though.
Okay.
I'll make sure you still get the materials and all that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hook you up.
And if you have anything to share, you can submit it and we'll provide it at the meeting.
Okay.
So, okay, and some of the other things on the list here.
I'm sorry, just at 5:30 PM?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, and there's, Jason or Ashley, just jump in when you want to, but one I want to touch on, sale of city-owned land.
Yeah, we're, we'll take them in order. We have topic number three is story field. Just wanted to give a brief update, which is that we had done the conceptual planning around duplex plans. We didn't have it developed or come forward. Costs are, are a major problem right now in any development. We floated the idea internally and with engineering firm of switching to, rather than seven, six or seven duplex lots, to something that would maybe be 10 smaller form of home, individual family home lots. We're still running into, you know, costs of $700,000 to a million to develop the infrastructure. So if you go to 10 lots, then you're looking at $70,000. You know, someplace between $70,000 and $100,000 a lot, right? So right now, it, it does not appear that there is a, a clear path forward. And the council has prescribed, as a result of some other development considerations, a comprehensive financial planning process that the city would go through, which will lend itself to helping us prioritize which one of these development opportunities we, we may choose to, you know, launch out into. So that's an update on story field. Right now, there is no action. The next one would be zoning ordinance update. We had provided you with matrix of, of different uses and, you know, R1, R2, R3 overlays, that type of thing. We're currently working through that matrix, reading it, making comments on it, and we'll have to bring it back through to a larger group of staff and then we'll bring it back to you. But right now, that's where we're at. We're reading through that matrix, trying to make corrections and read categories and reclassify things. So there is progress, but it is slow. Topic five was highway 14 traffic study and also as it pertains to the hospital. We had contacted Ford Traffic Engineering to use their request for proposal to do a traffic analysis on highway 14 in the area of the hospital's new location. Two of the traffic engineering firms we contacted declined to offer a proposal. Two of them have come forward, MSA and KL Engineering. The quotes were for $35,915 and $26,600. So there's a substantial differentiation. However, Ashley and I have not had the time to review all of the details of those quotes. And so we will be doing that and then we'll be making a recommendation on a full review of the proposals into finance, who will have to identify where the funds are coming from to perform these traffic studies. There will be a process that, there may be opportunity to engage the, the planning commission, but a lot of what they will be studying is kind of known. You know, they'll look at traffic counts, intersections, historical crash data, those types of things. And then we'll also be working to collaborate with the Department of Transportation with regard to what they see if we continue to develop towards the east. So a lot of it is set, but where there is opportunity for input, we'll make sure that the planning commission is well aware of that. I think that's probably an update on that, unless anybody has a question on that one or input.
Yeah, just a quick question. So I know the hospital is in the process and a lot of their work kind of depends on the, the one federal.
USDA grant.
So are we going to tie this study into what they are doing so that if by chance their study, I'm sorry, then their grant doesn't come through, that we are performing, you know, traffic studies and, you know, it may not happen very near down the road or?
This, this is a, a study, knowing that the hospital, regardless of whether it happens next year or two years from now, three years from now, this is a study that's going to be required as development pushes that way.
Right.
So will actually allow us to introduce things into perhaps the capital improvement plan, which we're getting ready to undertake on a more substantial level. It allows us to consider, the planning commission to consider with more detail, what happens if, you know, a development pops up in this area, this area, or this area to our traffic pattern. So this is an investment that the municipality needs to make regardless of whether the hospital goes next year or two years from now.
Okay.
The hospital has authorized a abbreviated, has determined that they're going to have to do an abbreviated traffic study to study Gelland, the intersection of Gelland where they are contemplating their driveway. And so this, they're already in the process of that, so having this one go at the same time allows the two studies to, to consider what each other are finding and to make sure that we're, we're doing a good job of future planning for that intersection.
And I want to add that, as you said, this, this should be happening independent of or regardless of the hospital's development, but certainly that helped put this on our radar, that, hey, we need to make sure that we're properly planning 14 plus with the reconstruction that's going to occur in 2026 of the highway. If there were anything that we learned that we could work with the DOT now to have an adjustment made as part of that plan, the time is, is right. And I'm, I'm not confident that, that will necessarily come from that, but without something like this, we have no argument to make with them. We have no sort of negotiating power. And the other element of it is, you know, we're tracking things like this. If the city is spending anything that is either direct or indirectly supporting the hospital development, that's something that we're tracking and being sure to draw attention to when we go through the development agreement process.
Okay. That was my concern timely.
An example right now of what's already down there. So when you go to Homesteaders, if you are westbound, you can't turn into their lot. There's an island in the way. So right now, we have semis doing U-turns by the Walmart and coming back to Homesteaders because they can't turn into the lot, which is causing some issues as traffic increases down there, which it's been doing. So as an example, we don't want more of that. What, well, no matter, forget the hospital, no matter what else gets built that way, it's just obvious that that's the direction growth will happen. And we're just trying to get that highway as ready as we can. And these guys have talked to the DOT quite a bit. I'm aware of at least one local business owner that has as well, talking about access points off that highway. And they were told that if you want to add a new access point off 14, you have to demonstrate that that access point makes highway 14 better. It does not necessarily have to improve the condition of the property. This is now state law. It has to go through state legislature, all this stuff. So nothing's going to come easy. When we've talked to them about people complaining, and I agree with them who do, about trying to turn left coming out of the shopping center by KFC, that's not even down by the hospital. And I think we already have an issue. And as you go further down, and they have told you guys that there will be no roundabouts correct because they don't have funding for them. If you say traffic lights, what do they say to that? What do they say to that?
Well, they, they have a rating system that they use when they analyze an intersection as to whether or not a traffic signal is warranted. And so part of this process we're going through is to identify where in the rating scale we will be with the current traffic pattern versus where we will be when the hospital gets added and where we could be when other potential development occurs in that direction. So they, they will tell you, no need for a traffic signal. We're not allowing you to put it in because they don't want to slow traffic down on a major highway. That's one thing. But then when the traffic count hits a certain level, they will say, you will absolutely put in a traffic signal.
Right, exactly.
So there are a lot of intricacies and again, details that, that we have to work through. And again, this study is not just the hospital region. It does extend all the way down highway 14 to Peebles Drive or the, the old industrial park where Rockwell is placed.
Going, going east, does it end at Gelland or are we going further east than that?
Clear to highway 58.
To 58, okay.
And there, again, at timing wise, this is really helpful. As Jason was mentioning, well, maybe we might, depending on what, where we're at against the threshold and future development. So if a, a traffic light is going to be in the, the future, we're nearing that threshold, then maybe in our capital improvement plan and our infrastructure projects, we're laying wire now. Maybe we don't put the signal up, but we're putting wire there now, so that way we're ready to go when the time comes.
And that's a, that's a great point, and that's another thing that came up when we met with the utility department heads too. I mean, you know, it's incredibly expensive right now to build, to, to put infrastructure underground. So we can't just go, we're, first we're going there, then we're going there. This is, this, we've got to get to where, you know, this is the direction, this is why, this is when, before anything happens. And this is just another piece of that.
Precisely. Good.
Any other questions or comments on traffic study and/or hospital? Okay, so the next topic is the city financial planning topic. We just wanted the planning commission again to be aware that Ashley and I were directed by the council to gather requests for proposals for comprehensive financial planning services. This is going to include the city utilities because we need to look at the, the entirety of the financial condition of the city and the, and the major department, which is city utilities. We have been in conversation already with city utilities and they're in agreement that we need a collaborative process for long-range financial planning. They're seeing the same things that we're communicating with you when, when it comes to adding or extending water or sewer or things like that. The costs are, you know, they're substantially greater. I want to say they're nearly double what they were five, six years ago. So they're looking at development the same way. We are going, how do we, how do we use the, the funds that we have and how does the city partner use the funds they have to meet some of the requests that the developers are coming forward with, which they're saying, look, we're no longer putting that in, we're asking the city to do that. So again, a lot of details and things that we need to work through, processes and procedures that we were not accustomed to, we've never had to go through before, to the extent that we will to, in today's economic environment. So other things are capital improvement plan, TIP deployment, financial process and procedure audit with recommendation for changes, debt analysis, maximizing return on cash, city and utility tax and fee comparisons with other municipalities, long-range financial planning for development, staff and elected official education regarding official, available financial tools and best practices. Those are some of the highlights that we're expecting will come out of this comprehensive financial planning process.
It's a lot.
It's a ton.
It would be a ton of us.
It is, it is an incredible amount of, of things to pursue, and you can kind of think of it as each one of them as a project. And, you know, the capital improvement planning, that's probably the first or one of the first things that we'll need to be addressing because that ties into everything else that we do. But absolutely critical because it will allow for the, the utilities and the city to be on the same page and all working towards achieving those, you know, those specific targeted things that we figure out, what is the path forward to be able to finance those things with as little or no impact to our taxpayers as possible.
So topic seven then would be TIP district planning. So a little bit on more of that. So we're again finding in some of the conversations we've had here and with council and finance, we're, we're again finding that most commercial development is requesting a lot of financial investment from the municipality. So we would like not to use TIP districts because a TIP district basically takes control of the increase in tax revenue for extended periods of time, which means that the school and the county won't receive the tax revenue, but the tax revenue comes back in to help assist development take place. So my goal, you know, and I believe a holistic view of development is, well, we want develop, you know, we want development not only for tax base, but for the greatest resource, which is our people. We need people here to, you know, fill jobs and, and they take on philanthropic projects and things like that. And so people are what makes the community. But what we're seeing is in order to gain housing, in order to gain commercial development, we're probably going to have to use TIP districts to a much greater extent. So we're looking at needing the services of an engineering or consulting firm to efficiently identify district boundaries. It will also require a financial planning firm to establish legal elements of the district with the state. I am giving a very rough estimate on, on the cost to establish a new TIP district is probably in the area of, of $30,000 to $40,000 by the time you factor in the financial planning elements as well as the actual district planning that takes place. But that, that remains to be seen and we'll have to gain that official information through some requests for proposals. Of course, when you incur those fees, those fees can be repaid to the municipality by the increase in revenues that are generated in the TIP. So it's kind of like a short-term loan from the city to the district and the district ends up paying the city back. So I think we need to anticipate connecting with three to four firms for P's. And I would like to just share a few maps with you that are areas where I think that this group will likely need to consider as we move along in this process. So this is a, let's see if I can blow that up at all or not. So this is of course story field and to the northeast on that document, and then you have the old, the hot, the current. And then you have the old, the hot, the current hospital location, which if they move, will need to be considered for redevelopment. So this would be a potential district that could be considered to, um, help the, help these properties develop and/or redevelop. Um, a second area for consideration may be, um, for example, out in the new or north industrial park. Um, I've outlined a bunch of areas that could be considered, um, both for housing and/or industrial growth. And, um, housing can be accomplished inside TIP districts, uh, but there are different types of TIP districts and, and that, uh, sometimes puts bounds on, um, what type of development can occur in them. So, part of moving forward this is looking at, okay, what percentages of commercial versus residential do we have? And working through, making sure that a district works best for us. But this would be another area that we could consider a TIP district. Um, this area, of course, is, uh, the hospital location. Um, I've got too much area, um, of colored out there or highlighted there because you can be somewhat selective with the property that you put inside a TIP district and we'd want to do that. So for example, we wouldn't take the hospital property and put it in, uh, put it in a TIP district. It really would have no effect. The, I'm sorry, the hospital. We wouldn't take Walmart and put it in a TIP district because that would have no effect. Walmart doesn't plan on doubling the size of their facility or doubling the value of their facility. So it does make sense to put it in a TIP district and use up some of the allocation that you have that can go towards a TIP district, which is a whole nother financial model that we have to look at and present to you. So, but this is an, an area in general that we would consider looking at because we know development is likely to take place further to the east as we especially see the hospital development take place. Um, the next area that we could consider, of course, is, um, around foremost. Um, as you know, uh, or may know, they, they own quite a bit of property around their building. They own the old UBC pro-build location and have, have talked over the years on numerous different occasions about wanting to add to their plant. And, uh, oftentimes, uh, corporations like this come to you and say, we need your assistance to make this happen. So then it turns into a large negotiation process and those oftentimes include TIP districts. Uh, the next one, uh, for possibility is an area of Worm Street, um, and between, um, Jefferson and Main. This is the area right now on the south of the document is the current Health and Human Services building, which of course, there, as we talked in the previous agenda item about the county, considering, well, do we do something different with the Health and Human Service offices? If that takes place, it means that the property there that's currently Health and Human Services may be up for redevelopment. And in which case, we might consider a TIP boundary that goes, you know, between Jefferson and, and down, um, Main. Um, goes through some houses that are blighted condition. It picks up another couple of buildings. One's a burnout building. Um, another building's in very, you know, rough shape and then moves over along Congress Street and picks up the vacant land. Um, that's there, some of which the city already owns and other which would be, you know, prime real estate for redevelopment. This kind of outlier here is the, um, the former BM World Bank, of course, which is sitting vacant and which is a very challenging economic development, um, element in our community. So, um, this particular, uh, development, of course, is of the campus. So this area here is the hundred and thirty, roughly hundred and thirty acres that the campus owns. There is another section off of Rainbow Drive that I've identified that had at one point been identified as potential housing development, has some water infrastructure there, had some planning done, but the, the process or project fell through. Of course, you have Panorama Estates in the red. That's our only official TIP district in the city right now. And then you have the, the, um, property to, um, the west of Panorama, which, uh, again, in the recent past had been considered and talked about whether or not that could be a direction for development. Uh, the last one that I would, um, share with you is, this is actually a diagram that was been, was done by Beerbicker Engineering in consultation with them, but this picks up, um, some of the area of the old industrial park where Rockwell is on Peebles Drive and some of the vacant land there. Some of the lots that, um, potentially could be developed at a higher level along Highway fourteen. And then again, um, this is just kind of picks up the hospital location, um, and vacant property around it. But this is an example of, uh, when an engineering firm gets involved, they're going to get very specific. They're going to identify, you know, area one and what that use might be and area two and what that use might be. And, and so they're really getting down in the nitty-gritty of how we plan for a district, what we think the likelihood of those, uh, particular parcels within the district developing are, um, so that we're not wasting money on something that, you know, well, that, that sounds like a great idea, but we really haven't done any in-depth analysis on to, uh, with regard to the reality or likelihood of development. So those are the, the, the districts and I don't know if you have any thoughts or questions on those?
I, I'll add to that, um, you know, it's, it would be normal to think, well, if you're doing the financial services planning and all of that, that's talking about TIPS, but these are, just to, I guess, reiterate what Jason's saying, two very different processes. So the financial service element of it would be, okay, if that's a TIP, we'll run some performas and we can forecast how that would perform. Um, whereas this is saying, what makes the most strategic sense for development? Where would you get the, the best bang for your buck, if you will, based on the conditions of the land, the future land use planning, those sort of things? So there are two very different processes that we would have to go through and then really, you know, kind of one after the other. And once we've identified appropriate TIP locations, as Jason said, we only can have so much. The, the state limits us. We can't just have TIP and TIP and TIP and TIP and the whole city's a TIP. So it's another finite tool or resource that we have that we have to be very targeted because once you open it, you have it for a very long time. And so it might impact development that comes up that maybe you weren't expecting or weren't planning for. So, critical that we, we do the financial element of this. We get all of the elected officials and departments on the same page about where we're going to target our resources because they are very limited.
So any questions or concerns about anything, any clarifications I need to make? Okay. Um, the final topic that I had on the list was four sixty west First Street. And the update on that is that we did finally receive an official offer. And when we presented that to city council, uh, to finance, um, finance said, yes, they felt like that amount was acceptable. Um, and council did agree to go ahead and enter into, um, uh, to accept the offer. So the official offer to purchase has been executed. And, um, we are in the final stages of drafting the development agreement, which will outline a performance guarantee, which we have presented to the planning commission before. It involves a ten thousand dollar, um, payment that will go into escrow that requires performance by specific dates. The three primary dates are pulling a building permit, having a foundation in and backfilled, and then occupancy permit. The timeline is roughly one point five years to accomplish those three things. If they miss any of those elements of the timeline, they, um, they forfeit basically twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, and then five thousand dollars. If it, if they don't perform within the one and a half years that are prescribed and they forfeit all of those dollars, ten thousand dollars, that's an escrow, then it moves into a monthly fee, um, of roughly five hundred dollars a month, which is, uh, in attempt to replicate a sales tax rev- or a sales tax, a property tax, um, type of, of revenue. Um, so we believe that's justified and can be, you know, can be supported. So that development agreement should be, I would say, executed within ten to fifteen days. And there is a small, um, small form spec house being proposed there, um, which, uh, we'll see how the market goes, but the development team is, is very excited and, um, believes that there's a, you know, great opportunity. So we'll see how efficient they can be and how well-received it is in the community. And we're thankful to have a group of people, um, like that team that's been assembled to, to try a spec house in Richmond Center.
True, because they'd like to do more than one.
That's right.
So we need to all be open and rooting for this because as we go through these processes, we've already, the city's already been involved in demolishing two old houses, wound up owning the lot. So we didn't do that so we could mow the lawn. You know, the idea is to get new houses built down there and this is the first one, so here's to them.
When they say spec house, that, that just means they're building it in order to sell it or essentially?
Short, it's short for speculative.
Speculative, okay.
Speculative, uh, housing or speculation building. So they are speculating that if they build it, someone will buy it.
That's what I figured.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we just already set the next meeting date that is not our typical meeting. Everybody's got that. Then I assume we will still meet, need to meet on the twenty-seventh at five thirty AM. We're going to do that whether you're home or not.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that will be that next meeting. Go ahead.
And I would, uh, maybe should have mentioned in the updates and future agenda items, but, um, we're looking at, um, getting hopefully somebody from UW Stevens Point or something like that that does, uh, land use, experts in land use, to do a training for our, our board, our BOA, which would do zoning appeals. Um, and we're hoping that perhaps we could get them to come here or at least have some form of training for that BOA group. But also they do a lot of stuff with planning commission. So if we could have kind of a combined training, uh, that would be ideal. So we're working on that. Maybe it would be something in a regular meeting that we could do or it might be separate from. But just so you're aware, that's something we're, we're trying to get ironed out because it never hurts to get a little more training.
Okay. I think that brings us to motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion and second. All in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.